Thank you, everyone, for joining us today for our zoning ordinance review meeting number one. We're here to talk about shoreline alterations. And I'm going to go through a quick roll call. I'm going to just list your name, and if you can indicate if you're present, that would be helpful for our meeting notes. I will start with county commissioners, district number one, Commissioner Clark.
Here.
Commissioner Persky, District two.
Here.
District three, Commissioner Mergan.
Here.
District four, Commissioner Lenzmeyer. And District five, Commissioner Notch. All right. We're going to move on to Planning Commission. I have representing District number one, Jason Wienerman. District two, Sean Blackburn.
Here.
District three, Jason Cron.
Here.
District four, Ken Mossman.
Here.
Oh, good. Glad you could make it, Ken. District five, Mike Prowl. And we have at-large member Rich Blankish. I thought I saw Rich earlier.
I thought so.
We'll check for him in a little bit. And at-large member Jeff Bertram.
Here.
All right. Thanks, everyone, for joining us today for a different time of the day. We'll see how you like these 3:30 meetings, late afternoon. As we went through in September, we went through our schedule, and our first two months, we're going to be talking about shoreline. So Nick Newman, who you're very familiar with, with shoreline alterations, is going to be leading our meeting this afternoon. With that, I'll turn it over to Nick.
All right. Thanks, Angie. Let's see. There we go. Yeah, so for the meeting here, we're going to really look at and kind of dive into shoreline, shoreline ordinance, and kind of look at and understand what the zoning ordinance states currently as it relates to shoreline practices, and then to identify any areas that might require amendments to achieve the goals and policies of Shayshore in 2040. So we'll talk a little bit here to begin with. It's just part of the comprehensive plan process to implement, to lead to that implementation stage. So if we can get through those two goals for today, the next meeting would then move into analyzing the options that might be available for the areas that we look at and kind of identify today that we might want to look at changing a little bit, analyze those options, look at what other local government units do, what their regulations are, and then look at what some of the best practices are, really bringing in advice from maybe the DNR and other sources as well, and then to develop the language for those potential ordinance amendments. So these items here are on the outline for today, and what we want to cover. This is, like I said, we want to try to look at kind of a comprehensive approach in looking at this. This is in the same order as found in the packet that was provided. We'll run through that in the same order. So the comprehensive plan process, this was provided as part of the comprehensive plan. We look at the different implementation tools that are available, and one of them is zoning ordinance updates. And that's what we're going to really focus on here. The primary pillar when considering the shoreline section of the ordinance is the nature pillar. However, the living pillar is also involved. There's a set of lake shore living policies under the living pillar, which you might recall. Both the nature and the living sections were included in the materials. We want to make sure that really these policies are kind of front and center when we look at any amendments that are considered. So we have the list of the nature goals and water resource policies more specifically. And then in the living goals, we have the lake shore living policies. So there was some information in the packet about shoreline management more generally, just in terms of some of the numbers and an overview of it. If there's more information sought about this, we can provide more information and data before the next meeting. But there's not a lot more in this presentation, at least in terms of like overall information about shoreline management. So the first item to consider is shoreline contractors. So for some context, contractors performing work in shoreline areas required to obtain a shoreline excavator license, furnish a bond, and attend a county shoreline workshop once every two years. This is an annual requirement. They need to get that license every year. And it's been working pretty well. It helps the contractors kind of gain a better understanding of the requirements. They realize that there are requirements, and it often leads them to asking questions before a project rather than afterwards, or not understanding what the requirements are. But one thing has come up from time to time, that while there is a process to revoke the license of a contractor who maybe doesn't work without a permit, there's not really a mechanism in place to prevent contractors with outstanding noncompliant work done. They're still able to continue to apply for additional permits despite any noncompliant work that still needs to be erected. There are some options that we could look at addressing that, and maybe other things as well. So at this point, and this, after each section, we'll kind of go through this discussion here of if we feel that any amendment may be required to achieve the comprehensive plan goals and policies, and then if there's anything else that we should maybe be cognizant of. So with that, we kind of lead a discussion here in terms of if there's anything we want to address in terms of shoreline excavators in the county. Does anybody have anything or any ideas on, you know, if maybe in the one particular example that was brought up about the contractors continuing to pursue permits, is there any thoughts on that or any other potential issues?
Nick, Jeff Bertram. Obviously, we've dealt with one contractor in particulars. He's been before the board, I think, at least once, was at the Board of Adjustment last week, and had numerous violations. I'm not sure that we have a lot of them. A couple of them aren't licensed, and then they find out, and they either get licensed or they stop doing the work. But the concern is, I've never seen as many people, the drowned one, Nelson one, where landowners suddenly are just clear-cutting and doing things, and that wasn't directly related to the contractor, but they're just doing things blatantly. And 20 years ago, that happened, but it hasn't happened for a long time, and now it seems like the last year. And I think with the contractors, they're kind of marketing themselves as saying, whatever you want to do, we'll do it for you. We can make that happen. And so people have kind of, the word gets out that if, boy, if you want to do, you know, a six-foot wall, and you want to do this, or these other things that normally aren't allowed, get that contractor, and he's got a way to figure out how to get that done. I guess that's kind of problematic if we want it to be within a range. If we don't care what it is, then maybe it doesn't matter. But somehow, I think we have to make the contractors somewhat liable for that, because as you've heard me say, do you as staff have to tell the applicant, you're not going to be able to do what you want to do? If you've got a contractor telling them, you can do whatever you want to do, and then they get that in their head, and then they come to you, and you really don't tell them, you really, that isn't within the ordinance, you really can't do that. The best scenario would be the contractor's license, he's been to your training sessions, he knows the range. If he tells the applicant, you really can't do that, but you might be able to do this, and staff says that, well, now the applicant's getting the same message, and it stays within their ordinance. So somehow, when it gets out of those boundaries, we've got to have something in place that's going to check and balance that, in my opinion.
Nick, this is Jason Wienerman, kind of building on Jeff's comments. So if an unlicensed contractor excavator does the work, is there any penalty for that, to that excavator? Or does that come back to the landowner who hasn't got a permit, needs to come back and do a after-the-fact, and then potentially has to remove the work that was done? So is there any way that we can enforce compliance on the contractor through this process?
Yep. So for contractors who don't have a license and do the work, I believe it's like $1,000 fine. The challenge there, obviously, is being able to track down who did the work. It's happened previously, but then, you know, either the property owners might be tight-lipped about who did it, or there may just not be an understanding of who did it. We definitely see that from time to time, but it's not as frequent. So, I mean, that could be something we look at doing from that side in terms of punitive measures for unlicensed contractors. But for those that are licensed, they generally, you know, generally are obtaining permits for work.
Nick, along those lines, also, I think we've had a couple cases where the landowner and the contractor say, oh, I thought you had the permit. And the other one says, oh, I thought you had the permit. And I think there was an understanding probably that neither of them had the permit, but that was going to be their answer if they were asked. And so somehow, the responsibility's got to be put to one or the other. And in my mind, it should be the contractor, in that the contractor shouldn't be able to plant, turn any dirt, okay, unless he's seen a permit.
Nick, Jeff Bertram, again, I'm more familiar, a little bit more familiar with the building contractor part of it. Typically, with building contractors, you do want the building contractor to take out the permit, because that's where the liability falls. You, one, you're protecting the resident, making sure that that work that is being done is, you know, being done by someone that knows what they're doing. And then, two, if there is a violation, you can pull the license. If the applicant pulls the permit on a building permit, you can't go after necessarily the contractor, because he didn't take the permit, he or she didn't take the permit. So I think the contractor, and I know for a fact that building contractors, if an applicant says, I have the building permit, I know that most of the builders that I know, they say, let me see it. You know, they want to see it, number one. Number two, typically, it's got to be posted like in the front window or something of the structure to show that you do have a permit. But I think, you know, that they've kind of gotten away with that a little bit of saying, well, I thought he had it. Well, any, I would assume that's what you teach in your courses, that first thing you do is ask if they got a permit or not. I was surprised that only 53 contractors have a license. How many contractors are there in Shayshore County, do we know? And there are probably not all in Shayshore County that have the license problem.
Yeah, over the years, I mean, we have, I believe, over 150 different contractors who have had a shoreline license at some point in time. And obviously, some of those still are around. A lot of the excavators, you know, if they're not going to be doing shoreline work, they may not, from one year to the next, obtain the excavator license if they're not doing shoreline work. That does vary a little bit.
To the Planning Commission members that are here, they recall the situation we had on the chain. It was an unbuiltable lot. It was a rock outcrop. I think 50 truckloads of rock were hauled out of there and finally then reported, and neither the landowner or the contractor had a permit on that. Probably, the lot should never have been developed, but that was one way in which, of course, the work started and then never ended until we called them out on it. You know, again, that type of thing should not be happening.
Okay. So from what I'm hearing from the discussion, I think that maybe a takeaway is, is that there needs to be a little bit more accountability for contractors in some of this follow-up and things like that. Is that accurate?
Yeah, Nick, Jason Cron here. Just a thought, you mentioned one of the options being that people couldn't, contractors would not be able to pull another permit if they had any things that they had to take care of yet from a previous violation. I guess my thought would be that that seems to make a lot of sense, but I think we should probably put some kind of softening language in that regarding having a plan to restore or something like that. And what I'm thinking of is, I don't want to handcuff contractors that may have some type of a violation or something pop up late in the year, and they have been, you know, again, intentions to do it, but now weather or some other factor is going to prevent them from being able to generate additional work for the remainder of the year. So to me, if we do that, I think it makes sense. But to have language in there about having an agreed-upon plan in place with, you know, a date of completion, to not handcuff contractors that might have had something pop up. They're doing stuff with the right intentions.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, and I think that brings up a good point as well, is, and I think this will ring true with a lot of the other items we talk about, too, especially if, you know, there were any things that were becoming more restrictive. We want to make sure that we don't put the contractors in a position where they need to make tough decisions that could potentially lead to more violations. So that's a good point.
Nick, Sean Blackburn here. I have to make the observation that a $1,000 fine is nothing. That means nothing to these guys. So if that's supposed to be in some way a punishment, we have to really discuss changing that.
Yeah, and later on in the presentation, towards the end, we do talk about fees and the potential fines involved. So we could even elaborate on that more at that point.
Nick, Ken Mossman here. This deal with the fines, we discussed this four or five years ago. As far as my memory serves me, the commissioners decided not to raise the fines and things at that time. And from what I've heard through my almost seven years and with the Board of Adjustments, we need, between the staff and the contractor and the applicant, they need to get together and know exactly what, because I've heard numerous times, I thought we could do this, or I thought we could do this, or so-and-so said this. It needs to be set down on a piece of paper. This is what you're allowed to do. And then you all three sign off on it. So when it comes to, before the Planning Commission or whomever, this is exactly it. And we have to remember, there are certain members who say, well, these contractors shouldn't be asking for this or for that. Well, that's what we, as a planning commissioner, they're, they can ask for things. It's just like the government works all over. You ask for more than you want, and maybe I'll get this much, but you're still allowed to ask, right? Or should we not even ask anymore?
I certainly think, Jeff Bertram, I certainly think they should be able to, you know, ask within reason again of what and why that would make sense. And then that's what we act on in the board, finally, and approves or doesn't approve. So they certainly should be able to ask for it. What shocks me is that only one-third of the contractors are licensed. If you've got a database of the other two-thirds, I'd be in regular communication with them, still sharing the information, because education, in my opinion, is the biggest component of this. Letting people know there's a resource for them to ask staff what they can and can't do before they do it. But having over 100 contractors, or almost 100 contractors, not licensed, that used to be licensed, that's concerning to me. I didn't realize the number was that big.
Sure. Yeah, and we do still email them and provide them with information for our workshops and things. So we do still stay in contact that way, but we can obviously look at other ways to do that. Are there any other thoughts? No, go ahead.
Another thing we need to do is, I don't know, realtors need to inform people, because so many of these I see coming in are people who just bought a lake house, and now they want to change. The realtor should be saying now, if there's anything you want to start changing on the lake shore or whatever, you're going to have to get a permit. These are the people you need to contact. Instead of, they go in and they decide, well, we bought this, we're going to start doing this, and they don't even think about it that they should get some permits. I don't know, this has happened a number of times in the last three, four months.
Yeah, absolutely. That's another challenge.
I agree with Commissioner Persky. I agree with Ken. Oftentimes, we get the idea that, oh, you know, I just thought I could make it nicer, I could make this improvement, and they are not aware of that. Or they were informed, but then again, they know that if they ask, they're probably going to get turned down, therefore, they don't ask, and they just go ahead and make the changes. Along the lines of setting, you know, parameters and then having people come in and ask for, I guess, I would be concerned about always granting them the extension. So if we have a limit of four foot on walls, people come in and ask, and we just automatically grant it. There's no point of having it set at four feet. Similar would be setting the speed limit. If we've got a speed limit set at 45 miles an hour, people shouldn't be coming and asking us for, to drive 60. I don't know what their good reason would be, but if they could rationalize it, I guess it could be okay. But in fairness to everybody that's on the lake, I think we need to be pretty firm as far as what we're allowing. Similar to providing a variance. If they can demonstrate a hardship, I have no trouble, but they have to demonstrate a hardship.
Joe, Jason Cron here. I appreciate where you're at on your comments. The challenge I think we have to keep in mind with any of the things that are so prescriptive, like a four-foot wall, is that that might be grossly inappropriate based on the actual property, or it may be insufficient, because every property along the lake shore is going to be different. And so that's one of the things where I personally struggle with the way some of the language is written in today, because if someone picked a number, I get it. I mean, there's four foot. But what's magic about four feet? If you've got a giant bluff-type lot, four feet might be, you know, a gross injustice for what needs to be done. And Nick could easily, or someone on staff, could easily talk them, the contractor and resident, through what could be done appropriately without it needing a shoreline or a major shoreline alteration, permit to go past the Planning Commission. Vice versa, someone might be asking for a three-foot wall, and if they got a completely flat slope, that's completely ridiculous in that setting. So I don't, I wish I had a better answer for how to create some common sense-type language based on the property and the particular piece of shoreline. And if I'm off-base on that, Nick, chime in, but I just, to me, you should have better flexibility in being able to guide people to what would be appropriate based on the property versus a rigid line, which now, hey, this is what the rule states, four feet or nothing.
Yeah. So, yeah, you brought up a couple different points there, flexibility and things like that, and looking at the site. Those are definitely things I think we're going to transition into for the rest of the presentation. I guess if there's, I just think we had a pretty good conversation about the shoreline contractors. We've got a couple things that maybe we can come back with next time in terms of accountability and the contractors themselves. If there's no other new points, we can move on.
I'd just like to respond to your comment, Jason. Again, I have no problem if you want to have a variance, if you've got a good rationale. But oftentimes, many of these places, things have changed. You know, people used to have a 30-foot lot, and they used to have a, you know, a two-bedroom cabin with a kitchen. Okay, now we've got people that want to put, you know, a mansion on these little lake lots, and they're going to try to push and shove every way they can do it. Well, we know that you can't put, you know, 20 pounds of potatoes in a five-pound sack, and that's where I think we run into problems.
Understood. I think we were talking about different stuff. I agree with you in that sense.
Just wanted to, on Jason's comment, just a question. That four-foot wall, does that still include the part that's underground?
So I think I caught most of the question there. You're asking if the four-foot wall includes what's underground as well?
Yes.
Okay. Yep. So...
I know at one time that was a conversation.
Yep, and it still kind of is. Obviously, it depends on if there's also grading work being done. So if there, usually, the answer is yes, it's going to be counted, because it's still a part of the wall. However, there have been situations where it's been part of a grading project, a wider grading project, and some of the wall is below. And if it doesn't put it over any thresholds that would push it to a major permit, for example, you know, it wouldn't really be considered. But the majority of the time, four feet is the entire wall that's measured.
I think that's an issue that should be addressed, too, because the part that cannot be seen, and it's there mainly for stabilization. So I think that part needs to be addressed.
Okay.
Depending on how steep that slope is. Depending on how steep that slope is, how much you need underneath. You might only have about six inches that are allowed to be shown.
Sure.
A big issue we've had lately is this four feet is cumulative. People don't seem to understand what cumulative means. They think they can have two or three four foot walls. And the cumulative man, means, adding all your walls together is only supposed to add up to four feet, right, Nick?
Right, yeah, and we'll talk about that here in a, in a couple more slides. We'll get to retaining walls specifically. So for shoreline alteration permits, there's four main buckets that would, would require a shoreline alteration permit. We've got rock riprap placed above the ordinary high water level, retaining walls, topographic alterations, which includes any kind of excavation, grading or filling, and sand blankets. Once again, sand blankets above the ordinary high water level. So this is our current, so we'll look at riprap first here. And this is our current language on riprap placement. The ordinance states that riprap shall only be allowed when other methods are demonstrated to be unfeasible. Up to 200 feet is allowed under a minor permit, any more than that and a DNR permit is required. And then the three to one slope matches the DNR standard for the slope for the riprap. There's a maximum height of three feet above the ordinary high water level limit and a 10 feet landward maximum. So some of the observations, things that I see, you know, every week when I'm out on, on properties and talking with property owners, is that a lot of property owners want the look of the riprap and feel that it's either the best option or the only option available to control the erosion. One thing I see a lot of is, is the erosion potential is often self-induced through other shoreline alterations or disturbance, mowing or vegetation removal, all the way to the water's edge. There are some situations where riprap may be the best option, but this is usually only on very large lakes with a large fetch across, with bigger wave action. So Big Birch or Coronas come to mind in some situations. But by and large, a lot of the lakes in the county don't really warrant large riprap installations, at least for, you know, very extended areas across the shorelines. Some other observations with contractors, contractors really will, will often push rock as, you know, the only option to, to property owners. They're familiar with it, they're not as familiar with other options, bioengineering techniques, core logs, plantings, live state plantings, things like that, to, to shore up a shoreline. This is something we talk about a lot and we're continuing to talk more about at the shoreline workshop, but then also when I meet with contractors on site. So in this situation, you know, we, we have a couple of options. There's, there's a couple of different ways. We could say that, you know, our current ordinance requirements are sufficient to, to meet comprehensive goals and policies. Or we could do, you know, we could look at other options in terms of limiting riprap to a, to a specific length across the shoreline, looking at vegetation requirements, either in the riprap or around the riprap. There's a few options there if this is something that Tennessee has an issue or want to address in some way. So I think with that, we can kind of open up the discussion again as to what the committee feels might be, might be something to, to consider.
Nick, I think.
I'll, I'll chime. Oh, go ahead.
I think one of the challenges that you highlighted on this session is that landowners like the clean look of riprap. It allows them to put the riprap in and then have a beautiful manicured lawn down to the riprap and all's fair in riparian and shoreline management, once you do that. So it's, I mean, it's going to be a tough balance to figure out how we change that attitude that a beautiful manicured lawn has a more chance of erosion and riprap is not the be all and end all correction.
Agreed, Jason. You know, I, there's places where riprap makes, makes appropriate sense. But you know, you look at the photo above and that's, that's an unfortunate scenario there, because there's a lot of other things that could be done that'd be much better for the lake. And so it is an interesting thing. I'm, I'm a big believer in personal property rights. However, it gets tricky when you get into a lake shore, because anything that you do on that lake shore is going to impact every other property owner and, and the public for that matter that utilize that space based on how you do it. And this is, to me, where it would be really nice to have that flexibility for staff to advise based on what's appropriate for the setting. There's, there are going to be those instances where it's appropriate. But conversely, I mean, I look at Stearns County. To me, adding riprap to lakes like Coronas or Big Birch, which are, are natural, natural glacial lakes, most of those shorelines are basically set. In those types of systems, you really shouldn't be doing much to mess with the shorelines. Mother Nature's been doing that for, for many years. A system like the Horseshoe Chain of Lakes, which is a reservoir, that's not a natural system. Completely different scenario. And water levels, I mean, human activity consistently alter that system. And today, not so much with natural wave action like the, the Coronas's and the Big Birch's experience, but with boat traffic. The, the boat traffic today on the Chain of Lakes and the narrow channels that, that exist out there create wave action that Mother Nature could never do on that system. So there, there has to be, again, to me, flexibility given to staff to advise residents based on the circumstances they're dealing with. And from a, a county perspective, to me, the large natural lakes, the, the less that you mess with what's there, the better. And some of these other places, whatever we can do to limit the damage caused by, by people, the better. It's general I get, which is hard to put into standard enforceable language, but I think there needs to be a degree of flexibility based on what Mother Nature gives us.
Ken, thanks, thanks, Jason, for those comments. Anybody have any other comments or observations or thoughts?
Hey, Nick.
Go ahead.
Yeah, this is Steve. I just had the comment on, a while back, there were, we had this discussion on riprap and the ecological effect of, you know, the heating and cooling of the rocks. And I don't know if that is something that should be made available to owners when they're talking about riprap. Or maybe you guys do, maybe you have a fact sheet for that?
Yeah, that, that comes up a lot. And that's probably a primary discussion point when I do meet with property owners and contractors too, is when, you know, rock isn't really improving any, any nearshore condition. It's not providing any habitat. It's not going to, you know, be, do the be all and end all. It, it requires maintenance. You know, there's still things involved there, but it's not, it's not improving the habitat at all. But where you neutral shorelines, where you have, that is going to really hold the soil in place, even if the ice comes in and pushes it around, the roots are still in place. Whereas the rocks are going to move around a little bit. It's going to provide habitat, it's going to shade the water, it's going to reduce the, the rock thermal loading of the water, which contributes to increased water temperatures and algae blooms and things. Yeah, I mean, we, we definitely have these conversations with people.
Nick, Jeff Bertram, I was going to say, a lot of people, a lot of residents I've talked to kind of perceive the rock helping out the ice outs. A lot of property owners are fearful of, when the ice comes out, you know, if there isn't something to break that up a little bit. And some of the lakes that it really raises havoc with the shoreline. So I think some people view the riprap from that standpoint. And again, I don't know what those natural barriers do for the ice out conditions, but you can explain that to people that, that's not as much of a concern. I think that's, I hear that a lot.
Yeah, as, as do I. That's often a concern with the ice in and out. A lot of times though, no matter how, and that's why a lot of people will go with the larger boulders. We're seeing a lot more of that now as well, where people want the larger boulders and rocks. We state as a requirement that the rock needs to average between six and 30 inches, but people do want that barrier, that kind of hard armoring is kind of a, kind of a visual representation for them as something that's protecting their, their shoreline in a way. But there again, it doesn't necessarily provide the habitat or is as resilient as a natural shoreline. So as a committee, do we, do we think that this is something that we want to look into and maybe kind of analyze other ordinances or higher standards that other counties maybe have or that the DNR has guidance on?
Yeah, Nick, I was going to mention that. I, I think riprap is an area that we should probably look at a, a little bit closer on, on how it can be used as a tool when appropriate, but not overused when so often it's inappropriate.
Okay.
Jason, I'm in complete agreement, especially now even with some of these wakeboard boats. You know, again, some of the smaller places, you know, with those boats coming by, exceeding their shoreline and maybe rock is their only protection. And same thing, Jeff, again, when we get that heaving with the ice, I know that scares a lot of people. But, but I don't like, as mentioned before, when a property owner comes in and just likes the aesthetic, so he can have rock, green grass and a few trees, so they can see the lake. That's, that's not what we want. It's not good for the nesting birds, it's not good for the turtles, it's not good for much of anything that's living in the lake.
Okay. Yeah, so with that, that's, there's some good ideas there and we can come back with more information, further analysis at, at the next meeting when we dig into each item a little bit deeper. So the next section here is on retaining walls. This is the language for minor shoreline alteration permits. This, this is just a summary of kind of the retaining wall ordinance requirements. Essentially, any total wall height on a slope, so that's cumulative among multiple walls or a single wall, over four feet requires a major permit unless considered replacement by state statute. Walls greater than 25% of lot width requires a major permit. There's no setback requirement for walls from the ordinary high water level. They can be placed up to the ordinary high water level, just not below. Otherwise, it would be a DNR permit requirement as well. Walls behind the structure setback or minor permit unless there's other factors at play, steep slopes to a water body or a bluff, and walls double the setback or greater are exempted. So some observations here around the county. Retaining walls are largely sought for ornamental purposes. They're often used to kind of create a flat area on a slope to a water body. See a fair number of applications that seek the maximum length of that 25% lot width and/or the maximum wall height of four feet under a minor permit. And then retaining walls are thought to be used for reducing erosion potential and, and directing stormwater, but this isn't necessarily the primary function for retaining walls for stormwater flow, for instance. Creating the conditions where that water can infiltrate into the ground is going to be a better practice than setting up like a drain tile and directing it right to the lake. It's going to help cool the water into the ground and reduce the water temperature and also take out any chemicals or any residues that are in the water as it runs off. So with retaining walls, there are different options that, you know, if you wanted to do something to address retaining walls differently than what the ordinance already speaks to, there, there are different options. One of them would be restricting or prohibiting retaining walls in the shore impact zone. The shore impact zone is the, is half the, the structure setback. So in general development and recreational development lakes, it's 50 feet. Natural environment lakes, the shore impact zone is 100 feet. So one option would be reducing or, or kind of further regulating walls within that area, because that is the closest to the ordinary high water level and kind of the most sensitive resource concern. Another option would be just looking at amending allowable wall heights or length requirements kind of anywhere as it's stated in the ordinance currently, and then maybe other options you could look at too. So I guess, are there any thoughts or discussion in terms of retaining walls on shoreline properties?
Nick, as you mentioned, the retaining walls, many of them are installed for ornamental reasons. Would it be feasible to require an engineering survey of the lot prior to the installation of the wall to determine if there is an erosion risk? And if a retaining wall is the only way to solve that risk, similar to what we sort of require in terms of riprap?
Um, yeah, I mean, obviously, we, we can determine if there is erosion potential on the property. So on steep slopes, you know, given the vegetation that may or may not be present, obviously visible signs of existing erosion problems. These are things that, I mean, you can kind of pick up on, and I, I pick up on this as you visit properties and you hear property owners talk about how in the past, there's been waters run here and, and things. So in terms of getting an engineered statement there, I don't know that it would give us a lot of new information or be very telling. And it might actually just end up being a barrier that the property owners wouldn't want to, prevent them from getting another, prevent them from actually applying for a permit. Could be another barrier, so. I guess those are my thoughts.
Another statement you just made, Nick, this is Ken Mossman, is either when realtors sell people property or when people sell it directly to another person, I think some of these people need, need to be made aware that there's more different kinds of lakes. I know a lot of people think, when buying lake property, it's all the same. No, we have two or three different types of lakes and there's different setbacks on the lakes. They think, well, I'm buying this, I can do this. No, you're on an environmental lake, you can do this, and you can't do that. Isn't, doesn't this sometimes come up?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, the setback difference on a general development lake, 75 feet, and on a natural environment lake, it's 200 feet. So I mean, that's a very, you know, distinct difference right there. So yeah, I mean, there, there are definitely differences that people aren't always aware of when they purchase a property or even those that may have had property on a lake for a long time. They may not even be aware of that. Are there any thoughts on maybe thinking about regulating retaining walls differently closer to the water than, you know, like maybe 20 feet from the ordinary high water level versus 80 feet? Something like that?
Yeah, I, I, I think that makes sense, Nick. You made a comment, I think, which is, is good. I, I think we want to make it clear and, and flexible so that people actually want to go get the permit rather than it, it being so cumbersome that they're fearful to do it and maybe purposely fearful because it's easier to ask for forgiveness. So trying to be clear, to me, it's a, it's a much bigger deal if someone's going to build a retaining wall within 50 feet of the water or, or something like that versus further away from the, the shoreline on their property. And, you know, the distances, that makes sense. To me, we could be less restrictive as it gets further away from the water and then maybe look at, at those retaining walls as they get closer to the water, usually because they are aesthetic, as, as something we'd want to look at at the Planning Commission level. As, as something we'd want to look at at the planning commission level.
Nick, Jeff Bertram, getting to Commissioner Mergens' point, you know, when, when you, when we do look at this, let's remember that discussion about is it the wall that's showing or is it the entire wall? If you remember the one after the fact that we discovered, I think if I'm not mistaken, staff recommended that they cover up the wall. The wall was too high and they simply pushed dirt to the bottom of the wall, making the wall less high. But yet it was underground. And then the other side of that was if it was attached to the house, there were different standards and I still don't understand that. So when we do have that discussion, we may want to have Commissioner Mergens' point, which kind of plays into the, the one where we allowed him just to simply cover it up and then discuss a little bit more about how that affects or why does that change it when it's simply attached to a house?
Okay. Yeah, those are two points we can bring up when we look at developing the language. If those are things we want to change or modify in some way. I'll make a note of those.
Nick, Sean Blackburn, I wanted to remind us of Jason Cron's point earlier about maybe we should look at and that the pitch, the grade, the, the distance and, and look at maybe how we might interpret some of these other beach funds that are almost like bluffs because we, we do have to treat them a little differently.
Sean, I'm going to continue. That was, I was going to bring up the same topic because we do have a number of bluffs that people wanted to put retaining walls on. And, and we've got to make a decision about, yes, what are we going to allow there and what we're not going to allow there. And, and that comes to a point of development on the lakes. I think we have to come to an agreement pretty much that all the easy development has been done. Now the, the lots that are left are the more challenging ones. They're the ones that are lying in the lowland and they're real wet and you can't get out there because there's brush and swamp and muck. You know, there's those types of shoreline. And the other ones are, like you mentioned, Sean, are the bluffs. They're so steep and they weren't really easy to develop because people didn't want to have the kids run down the bluff to get to the beach, to get to the water. But those are the pieces that are left for development. But it really destroys the integrity of the lake when we start carving up those bluffs.
Joe, is there a way that we could stop, that we could not allow these places to be developed?
Yeah. Well, again, I don't know if I want to be, I don't want to be that restrictive in that a person can still maybe have access to them. I think like the stairways we have allowed. Okay. When you put in the pilings, I guess I have no problem with that. You know, but what I don't like to see is I don't like to see the idea of, okay, we're going to carve it out. We're going to put you know, 40, 50 foot wall in there, have a patio where we're going to be able to have a bonfire. And all of a sudden, all those trees have been taken out. Now the integrity of the bluff is gone. And then of course, it looks like hell from, from the lake because all you've got is rock and, and in the evening, all you've got is a, you know, rock and fire.
Okay. Yeah. So, so definitely some points here on, on steeper slopes and bluff areas. We want to make sure that we think about those specifically as well as areas closer to the water. Is there anything else that anybody has for retaining walls? Okay. So next on the list, we've got topographic alterations, which includes excavation fill and grading work. Essentially if there's less than 10 cubic yards, a topographic alteration does not require a permit and regardless of wherever you're at here. If you're above 50, the ordinance states that one's not required or up to 50, sorry, the ordinance states one's not required if you're not in a, in the shore impact zone, bluff impact zone or a steep slope. And then greater than 100 cubic yards requires a conditional use permit unless you're double the setback or greater. So some observations on, on this here. Many projects will start at 10 cubic yards or less, but may increase after starting on a project. And some of this is is partly to do with how property owners are maybe not very well acquainted with cubic yard calculations. Say 10 cubic yards, but most people, maybe not most, but a lot of people may not understand how far 10 yards really goes or doesn't go in a project. Erosion control is, is important even on smaller projects. Especially if, if it is on a steep slope or adjacent to the water. 10 cubic yards can, you know, if not managed properly can, can lead to significant erosion problems. Alterations setback behind the building setback or double the setback often pose a little resource risk unless it's adjacent to a wetland or a natural drainage area or something like that. And then another observation too, is that many topographic alterations are done in conjunction with other projects. So we get a lot of, a lot of permit applications where people are looking at doing walls or patios or they kind of lump a bunch of things together and dirt moving is, is kind of synonymous with a lot of that. So given that, we, you know, we could remain the same in terms of the language for exemptions with 10 yards or less. Not requiring a permit or 50 yards or less if it's not on a bluff, shore impact zone or steep slopes. And then more than 100 yards would be a major permit. Other things we could look at doing would be kind of requiring a permit for any alteration. One, one thing there is, like I said, we'll see a lot of projects that will try to meet that 10 yard exemption, but you know, it's right next to the lake or very close to it. And if it's not managed properly, one, one thing with the permits, one benefit of having the permit is you know, the erosion and sediment control needs to be stated and needs to be clear on the application and that needs to be identified. So if it's not permitted, that isn't necessarily always verbalized or shown or understood and isn't always followed. There, there are other options too, in terms of the numbers for the thresholds or things like that. So are there any thoughts on, on excavation fill or grading work?
Nick, Jason Cron, I, I think we could look at it again, you know, as they look at both the riprap and the excavation portion of it, I think maybe the way that we look at it is introducing language and trying to better tie what's allowed without a permit or with different types of permits based again on the site. So if we could, you know, maybe classify lake shore properties and then, you know, what's allowable within that lake type or, or sorry, that shoreline type. There might be areas where even, even nine yards of, of fill is completely inappropriate. And so by being able to classify a lake type or shoreline type, it, it might allow more flexibility on both sides of things.
Yeah, definitely. I, I agree.
Nick, where do we come in with removal of vegetation here? Is that, would that be an excavation or, and would that fit into our ordinances at all?
Yep. So, so for vegetation removal specifically, that's a vegetation alteration, but usually if, if there's any vegetation within a project area, so within an area that was going to be graded or, or fill would be added, that vegetation removal would be covered under the shoreline alteration itself. So you know, that is something that we can look at as, as an option if we wanted to put language in terms of vegetation reestablishment or including requiring planting plans for any kind of dirt work. Those are options that some other counties have or, you know, may require.
Yeah, I, I recall the development we had, was it on Ann Lake? Like with, where Blattner's did a development next to that and some of our environmental lakes now, again, as people are looking for anything that's got water and they want to develop, we actually end up having a bog there. So I, I mean, what's, what are there options there as far as removing that bog?
Well, if it's wetland, it'd be governed under the wetland rules. And that's something that wetland staff would work with. Depending on the type of wetland, it could be Wetland Conservation Act. You know, there'd be requirements there. But, but if not, you know, and that flood plain as well, there are specific flood plain requirements, but.
Well, I'm, I guess I'm just concerned about people that have something that's very low and they, they consider it's lake shore. They don't consider it's wetland. And they think that, well, when the wind's right, I'll cut the piece loose and let it go across the lake. Or is that something that's a DNR issue and not ours?
Well, yeah. So if it's below the ordinary high water level, whatever, whatever elevation that is, if it's, if it's below that, you know, then it'd be DNR. But obviously if there's branches and things, it probably includes some type of free or upland species. So you know, Wetland Conservation Act doesn't regulate vegetation removal. It would be the county jurisdiction at that point, but then that would be, you know, under our vegetation alteration standards. Which we will be talking about here a little bit later. Are there any other thoughts on, on this point specifically, or is this something that we want to dive into further analysis on, or do we feel that it's be reasonable and that we can, that these align with the comprehensive plan goals and policies that we have?
Nick, Jeff Bertram, with all the other issues that are probably more, if we have to prioritize them, I would put this at a lower priority. And it would tie in, I think, with the riprap and the retaining wall to some degree anyway. But if we have to prioritize, if we can't do it all, I would say this would be on the lower end of things versus, versus. And I guess I'm putting my two cents in. I agree too, the current way, this is kind of one of the lower end things. The biggest thing is what Nick said. People don't realize what 10 yards is and 20 yards is and 30 yards is. And they start moving dirt and all at once, they've moved 30 yards or 40 yards instead of 10 yards and because they have no concept of what a yard of dirt is.
Okay. Yeah. And I think maybe what we'll do, since it's, doesn't seem like it's a, it's a high priority thing. We've already gathered some information from some other counties as well, and we can maybe even add to that a little bit more. But I don't know that we're, you know, it doesn't sound like we'll go do a lot of analysis and further discussion on it, but we always can if, if we want to. So the fourth component that requires a shoreline alteration permit would be sand blankets. These are rather ubiquitous across the county, but they're also very seldomly permitted. And there's a few reasons that maybe contribute to that. One of them is the fact that so our fee schedule for all shoreline, minor shoreline alterations is $400 across the board. So when you, when you think about a sand blanket project, it's relatively high cost when compared to the actual cost of the sand that's being placed. So that potential barrier for, for people, you know, they may not want to apply for a permit if it's going to cost as much as their sand costs. Sand is easy to obtain, so it's readily available. People can get, bring it in relatively easily. There's a legacy of, of existing sand blankets that maybe have been or haven't been permitted that people look around and they see a lot of sand blankets around them and they figure, well, you know, I can have one too. It's also difficult to enforce sand blanket maintenance where people want to add to it and expand it. It's very tough to enforce that because we don't always have the information on what was existing or when it was there. You know, and another challenge here too, is that the DNR does allow sand placement below the ordinary high water level without a permit, as long as it meets their dimensional requirements. So, you know, if we wanted to do anything with sand blankets here, options of maybe changing the cost of what it would be to obtain a permit for a sand blanket. We could change dimensional requirements for what would be allowed. Another option would be just eliminating the permit requirement and stating that, you know, if it meets the size requirements, then it's fine without a permit. Different things that could be done if we feel that it's important. But are there any, any thoughts on, on that?
It's, it's a tricky one. I hear you, Jason Cron here on, on the cost of the, the permit for a sand blanket. And I think maybe even understanding of when and where it, it, it can fit. I question if reducing the price of the permit would actually result in a higher amount of people permitting it and doing it correctly. It seems good in theory. I just don't know if, if that would make a difference. It, it may in fact, because word tends to spread on lake shores that if you're going to do something like that, hey, you call the county, it's a hundred dollars and, and you know, they'll, they'll tell you what you can and can't do. To me, that's a, that's a better situation than what we're in today. But I, I think if you don't have some type of permit, then it's just a free for all and, and it could compound the problem and make it worse. So to me, maybe there is a, an argument for reducing that permit fee. And then getting a better handle on it.
Nick, Sean Blackburn, in addition to that, I, I think we need to be concerned about the maintenance aspect. And the fact that, and, and we all know, most of these sand blankets, the sand ends up in the lake before too long. And then as you've got maintenance obligations and, and et cetera. And so the, the permit at least has some kind of something, but I'm, how do we, we need to discuss how we deal with this and people who, who pay no attention.
Yeah, Sean, that's kind of where I was going to the point is we want more people to get that permit so that that education's out there. Right now, to me, the, the problem is when it's not, so people are doing it under the radar, thinking that they can't or shouldn't or so on and so forth. We're better off having someone pay a nominal fee and do it right with that education.
Nick, with them drawing the permit, is it always followed up with a site visit?
Yeah. So we do re-inspections on every single one of our shoreline alteration permits. So there would be a follow-up aspect to that.
So my concern would be is that if we are doing a site visit, you know, those, you know, those that don't come free to the county, at least there should be some investment and at least a check to see if the work was done and completed correctly. So you know, which way we want to move on, move on the price would be, you know, something to consider.
Dick Rich, Lincoln Shore. On those permits, do we require those to be posted so public can see it like when you have a building permit for building a home?
Yeah. So they get a permit card as well that they would post so that people would see that there was a permit pulled for the project. And then those are posted to the website on the land use mapping application as well. So that's publicly available. People can see.
Where does it get posted on the property? Is it on the structure or does it get posted out? I'm just thinking from a standpoint, if, if it's visible, so as different people go by and they may look I'm just thinking from a standpoint, if, if it's visible, so as different people go by and they may look at it and say, oh, that's got to be permitted, I didn't realize that. It might, it's almost like a informative procedure is what I was thinking.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, they're bright lime green cards and the, the permit cards specifically state the post-permit card in a conspicuous location. So it, it doesn't necessarily need to be on a building, you know, some, some sites may not have a structure. So they'll post it on a tree or something like that, or a mailbox or something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other thoughts on this? Sounds like something we might want to look into a little bit, at least in terms of the fee or, or any other barriers that might be there for people to, to obtain a permit about sand. Is there anything else? Okay. Okay, so next we can look at impervious surfaces. So right now, the, the county doesn't really limit impervious surfaces beyond the statewide minimum or maximum 25% lot coverage requirement. If the, if the patio or impervious area that, you know, is within 12 inches of the existing grade, a permit would not be required. So, you know, people could build a patio right at the, the ground level and there'd be no permit requirement if they didn't move more than 10 cubic yards of material. A permit's also not required for walkways or stairs to the lake, as long as it meets the dimensional requirements of it being four feet wide or less. Any landing areas would have to be 32 square feet or less, and those would not require any kind of permits. One of the observations, large patio areas, especially in the shore impact zone, and it's become, they've become more prevalent lately, it seems like, these patio areas may be placed right up to the water's edge and produce sometimes significant direct runoff to the water body. Lack of vegetation or at least quality vegetation can reduce screening and water infiltration into the ground. In some situations, because this isn't a permitted activity, properties may increase their impervious surface on the lot over the maximum 25% without even realizing that there is a, a maximum impervious lot coverage requirement. And then it can become an issue when future permits are, are sought, like a construction site permit or, or something. And then small lots with slopes directed toward the neighboring lots can produce more runoff and can be adequately handled or infiltrated properly on, on that site. And that can lead to runoff issues, direct piping of the water into the lake or, or other potentially erosion issues. And this is really more prevalent on small lots, but it can occur anywhere the impervious surface is concentrated to an area. So, you know, there's options here too, if, if we wanted to look at requiring a permit for impervious surfaces, especially looking at areas closer to the water, like in the shore impact zone, kind of really focusing in on the areas where it becomes a bigger issue. It could also be just for any impervious surface on a riparian lot. But right now, we don't really have a lot of rules governing the impervious, as long as it's within 12 inches of grade. No setback requirements, property lines or, or the lake, so. Is this, any, any thoughts on impervious surfaces?
I'll, I'll jump in again to start here, Jason Cron. I, I don't want to create a pain here for people, but to me, this is as big of issue, if not bigger, than some of the four-foot wall requirements in, in how it's happening today. Some of the impervious surfaces right just off of a shoreline can be disasters. And so I think we should look at it. And, and I think it's a relatively simple thing to look at, but it, it probably should be modified a little bit as it pertains to how water is drained, what happens to it after it runs off the impervious surface. There needs to be some kind of a plan so that that's not heading onto the neighbor's property or directly into the lake.
I would second Jason's comment. I thought some of the examples you gave from the other counties that didn't allow impervious surface in the shoreline zone seemed to make sense. So some of those seem to be useful contributions.
Okay, so I'm, I'm kind of hearing that it's, it's something we should look into, especially in terms of the runoff to like neighboring properties, the, the water, and then that proximity to the, to the water.
Yeah, I'll agree with what's already been said. No question about it being a problem right there on the water's edge. However, you know, if they're looking with excess towards the back where the garage may be or a park, plots or whatever they've got there, if they can run it off into a rain garden or they can gutter it and re-channel it back away from the lake, I have no problem with that.
Okay. Right, so the next item here, the agenda is looking at vegetation alterations. So currently, the, the ordinance allows for identifying a view corridor of 50 feet or half the lot width, whichever is less. And then within that corridor, 25% removal of the vegetation would be allowed to be removed. This is a no-cost application that property owners would fill out and submit. We would do a site visit on this to have all of the trees that are proposed for removal be identified. And then we would also follow, we would also follow up on this after, after the, the vegetation is removed. Any, any invasive species, any buckthorn, rickley ash, things like that can be removed without the vegetation alteration application. Some of the observations that we've kind of seen here, view corridors aren't always used as the main access routes for access to the water. This can lead to additional clearing for access paths or dock storage or patio areas, fire pits, things like that that would exist outside of the view corridor and would, you know, be often leads to more intensive removal within the 50-foot corridor. And then documenting and verifying removal of a percentage of the vegetation can be pretty time-intensive, especially for lots that are heavily wooded. And I mentioned too, the invasive and non, non-just species can be removed without a permit, but ensuring that, that additional vegetation beyond just the invasives isn't, you know, ensuring that that isn't removed as well can, can also be very difficult. We've seen a, a number of, of these that have not followed the guidelines or not applied for permits in the past. We all maybe have a picture of a couple in mind. There are different ways that we could go about regulating vegetation removal. One option would be defining a specific size in the shore impact zone. That's a designated shoreline use area. And anything outside of that, that area, we would limit or prohibit vegetation removal, but allow intensive removal within a smaller portion of the property, which often ends up happening anyway. But there's really no boundary that's set, it just kind of continues to expand along the entire lot. Another option would be, especially for smaller lots, to maybe require that a view corridor and an access or recreation corridor would kind of coexist in the same space. There are other maybe percent removal options that, that could be available as well. Other counties have done variations of various different methods. So it's kind of a challenging one because we're not always on the site before vegetation removal happens. And even if we are, it, it can be difficult to sometimes ascertain that 25%. But, I mean, it's, it's not impossible. So are there any, any thoughts on vegetation alteration options?
Nick, what about new construction versus existing lake shore properties? When they have a new property, obviously they need a building permit. Do we, do, when they come in with the building permit, could we require the, a vegetation plan?
Yeah, so a lot of times it's already a discussion that we do have with them, when we go through what they're going to require or what they're going to need. So for, yeah, for new development, it's the discussion of, okay, we've got a construction site permit, septic permit, vegetation alteration, if you want to have a view corridor to the lake. That's usually all discussed upfront. I'm glad you brought up though, the kind of new, like untouched properties versus those that have been developed already.
Yeah, for example, the Big Fish property. You know, how could that have happened? Was, was there a vegetation alteration plan for that house?
No, but one of the conditions on the permit specifically stated that no vegetation could be removed. So it, you know, it was, it was listed on the permit and that's, and that's listed on, on our permits that we issue on those. A lot of times it will specifically state that vegetation removal outside of that building envelope in 20 feet is not authorized. So the other point I was kind of getting to is, is the difference between kind of properties that are still heavily or fully wooded and vegetated versus those that are existing and have been a, you know, shoreline property, maybe a structure on it for a long time. We're not seeing a lot of new trees getting put onto these existing developed shoreline properties. And trees will fall down and they'll die and they'll, you know, but they're not necessarily being replaced or growing new because most of the lot is maybe lawn grass or something like that. So that's another aspect to think about is there's kind of two different levels here. There's one where there are already developed lake shore lots with very different vegetation than lots that maybe haven't been touched or developed as much.
Nick, Jason Cron, I, I think there's, just based on what we've seen, there's probably an opportunity to review this. It's one, you know, I'd be curious to hear what you're encountering. I think we should look at it a little bit closer. It'd be, I'd be curious to hear what you're encountering from, from shore landowners. Maybe we don't need to do anything drastic, but just based on some of what we've run into recently, it, it probably seems like we, we have an opportunity to do a little better than it's there today.
Nick, Jeff Bertram, I'm just really troubled by that we've had three to five blatant clear cuts this year. And that just is troubling, I, I mean, not just like five or 10 trees, I mean, complete lots. And I think all three of them now have a restoration plan, the three worst ones probably. But we should be troubled by why would that happen like that in such a short period of time? Because again, people can't be that naive, one, to think that you can't do it and two, to think that people aren't going to see it. And that's what happened in both cases. Obviously somebody saw it and then turned them in and then now they're dealing with, although they can kind of plant the new trees in a different formation. So maybe at the end of the day, they maybe did get something out of it, but the blatant clear cutting just really troubles me and I don't know how we address that.
Yeah, that can definitely be something we discuss further on, different strategies to prevent those incidents from happening. Any other thoughts on vegetation alterations?
Nick, Sean Blackburn, I'll, I'll just add that I did kind of like, when we touched on looking at it as an equation, something like a percentage in, in similar fashion that we do to the impervious surface kind of equation. And that, maybe that's something we need to look at because when you're breaking apart those, those usage areas, that, that's when it really comes into, into play there.
Okay, yeah, and I'll, there were some examples of other, you know, ordinances out there that deal with it in different ways. I can add to that a little bit and we can kind of look at how we want to, if we do want to change it, there's different approaches we could take, whether it's a percentage or a defined area and things like that. So moving on here, so the next kind of component here is, is an idea that isn't really part of the current zoning ordinance necessarily, but it's, it's a different way to maybe approach how we would look at shoreline properties, kind of site conditions kind of at a, at a bigger scale, kind of zooming out a little bit and looking at more of a site conditions evaluation. And which is kind of mentioned in a couple of different comments here earlier in, in the discussion. So, and, and this is called, this is kind of based on a tool called Restore Your Shore with, with the DNR that kind of developed it as a citizen strategy to look at how their lake shores kind of stack up in comparison to maybe what's best for the environment. So, and these are slides that are pulled from a DNR presentation on this kind of framework. So we'll kind of go through this a little bit and explain it and maybe talk about some ways that we could apply this in, in, in the zoning ordinance. So we do see a lot of development that kind of looks like this, where you've got limited tree cover, manicured lawns all the way to the water's edge. And in this particular instance, there's even a retaining wall and some riprap at, at the water's edge. It's not a lot of really non, you know, native vegetation on something like this. And then, you know, there's, there's other properties that might be developed in this way where a lot of vegetation's still present and leads to various different benefits, reduces nutrient runoff, prevents erosion, things like that. This, this tool kind of identifies three different habitat zones. So an upland zone, it's more in the upland areas, a shoreline zone, and then aquatic zone. For our purposes, we're only looking at things above the ordinary high water level. So we would really only be looking at like the upland and shoreline areas. And what this does is it kind of develops like a scoring method to evaluate in an objective way kind of what the site conditions are, not necessarily based on what people's perceptions are, what they think or what staff thinks or anybody thinks. But it's about just looking at what the site conditions are in terms of vegetation, which can then lead to different things like erosion potential. So the first step here is identify the three habitat zones. We'd be looking at the upland and the shoreline areas. And then you would look at the, the cover of each type of vegetation. So you'd look at tree cover, shrub cover, and unmoed ground cover. So if it's mowed and it's just manicured grass, you wouldn't, wouldn't count as the unmoed ground cover. And then you can tally that up and kind of generate a, and evaluate how that area is in terms of cover and just kind of overall quality, you know, in terms of environmental impact. Do the same thing at the shoreline zone. Look at trees and shrubs that are present, unmoed ground cover, and generate a score. You can do the same thing with the aquatic zone, but we wouldn't necessarily look at that from a county. that from a county perspective. There's a whole framework developed for this and they go through in more detail in terms of how this is evaluated. It's something that we could utilize this in a way where we could look at, when I do a site visit with property owners or contractors, you know, we could say, well, okay, let's look at the site as a whole and not just maybe the one element that you're trying to correct for because maybe up slope, there's a reason why there's a problem down slope, things like that. Some of the benefits here would be, you know, you could address larger concerns and it would also play into really making sure that we maintain or improve the habitat on shoreline properties because something that right now we don't really look for or analyze is the wider site conditions. People can continue to apply for permits, but it, you know, as long as they meet the permit requirements, as outlined in the ordinance, you know, they can be granted the permit, but it doesn't always really consider the wider site conditions. So it'd be set up where if the property needs to meet certain criteria, if they can't meet it, they would, you know, could apply for a variance to seek a variance to still do an alteration if their site wasn't, didn't meet minimum requirements that were outlined. The, I do meet with, with property owners or contractors or a pre-application site visit anyway, this is when this kind of evaluation could take place before the application is even submitted, where we would meet up on site with and really talk about these conditions so that there's an understanding of maybe that education aspect as well, that doesn't always get through to property owners especially. And then it could include the property owners where they would maybe need to complete the assessment as well as part of the application. So there's a couple of different opportunities here potentially. So I guess with that framework, you know, is this something that maybe we would want to look at, use as an education or permit aspect, or what are some thoughts on that?
I guess I'll jump in first here, Nick, Sean Blackburn. I gotta say, I love it. I think it's fabulous because it also kind of streamlines what needs to be addressed in what area and why and how, and building in suggestions. It's cutting the work down and streamlining the information.
This is Jason, a question I have regarding this is, does it penalize landowners who either have bought properties that have more work on it or have more work that has been done in the past? Where they would naturally score lower on the performance base? And is that a concern?
Yeah, I mean, it potentially could. Depends on what type of work and alterations and development has occurred previously. But at the end of the day, I mean, ultimately, we're looking at the site conditions that might be leading to other erosion problems or runoff problems and things like that. So, yeah, I mean, it could definitely impact property owners who have bought something that's been heavily altered previously, but at the same time, there, I've personally been to properties that people have bought and then if they've done work to restore those alterations that were done previously. So that's where, you know, the restoration kind of fixes the alteration. And so that's, there's that too. But yeah, I mean, it all depends on what type of alterations have been done.
I like it. I think you ask a good question, Jason. And part of what I like about it is to address that exact thing is that it does get to the spirit of the comprehensive plan and providing more freedom and flexibility for, for property owners while still, you know, basically preserving our environments, our wetlands and shorelands. And this is just a good, more, there's still subjectivity into this, obviously, and hopefully the better we could define how we wanted to do it, the less of that subjectivity we'd have. But to me, overall, if we do it right, this is a very objective way of looking at a piece of property based on how it sits. And it really advances the conversation about flexibility and what people want to do with their property while staying within the guidelines of not impacting the other environments or surrounding properties.
Nick, Jeff Bertram, I think it would be worth pursuing. If we could do this hypothetically on the next shoreline or a couple of shoreline projects, I think it would be helpful to kind of put it through its actions to see how it plays out and how that looks. Of course, one concern would be, you know, there is certainly potentially manipulable or interpreted, just like the lease score, you know, now kind of has. So, but it still would be the educational factor of with the applicant. And when you said with the applicant or the contractor, you said a couple of times, Nick, go back to the contractor part of this and make a note. I think we should require an applicant to identify who the contractor is going to be. And I believe that any meeting that happens really should be with the contractor, staff, and the applicant. I think you just, I think we need to almost make that mandatory, that again, everybody's on the same page. And I think somebody said that earlier, have a sign off that staff, the contractor, and the applicant, all three have agreed to these terms. But when you do meet with them, meet with everybody, and then this is kind of a checklist saying, this is where you're at. And obviously, if someone, to Jason's point, would buy a property that has been, you know, altered significantly, that would bring that to light and then you could suggest things to restore it or have them. But I think it would be worth, you know, putting in action on a couple of examples. I think it's got potential.
Yeah, and another thing I could do is maybe try to get a little bit more information as to maybe a baseline of where some of our maybe permits from this year, kind of where they, what those sites, how they stack up and how they score, to kind of get an idea of what we're looking at. And that's obviously one thing we want to think about if we were going to set thresholds or minimum requirements. So that can be something I can gather some of that information.
Nick, that'd be cool. I think it'd be nice to see how that scorecard could come together and how different things evaluated and weighted as part of that evaluation. So if you could throw that together for us to review, that would be helpful, at least to me.
Yeah, definitely, I'll do that. Are there any other thoughts on this performance-based approach to evaluating the properties?
This is, this is Carol. I've been trying to be very quiet. I like that idea too. I think you're coming back with some examples of, of properties that have, are current, could both not only help us, but let's face it, if we move to this direction, it will help shoreline property owners too. Just being able to have some different kinds of examples. I know that I've tried, I've used or tried to use that tool and it's really pretty good that, boy, it would be helpful to have a few more examples. I'm guessing that other places could benefit from your work as well.
Okay, yeah, well, definitely, I'll put together some more information and we'll send out another, you know, list and kind of put some of this information together and send it up for the next meeting like we did here. Dive into more of the specifics on what those criteria would be and how current properties stack up and things like that. So the next section here, talking about violations and work without permits. So we talked about this a little bit earlier on in the, in the discussion today about different requirements or penalties and things. One, there's different measures we could take to maybe ensure compliance or kind of dissuade people from doing work without permits and things like that. One idea that I thought might be interesting is if we were to look at requiring a mandatory septic system compliance inspection if one hadn't been completed within like that previous year before the shoreline work was completed without a permit. Right now, what happens is, is, I mean, people need to have a current septic system compliance inspection within the last three years or five years if it's a new system in order to obtain a permit for shoreline work or any permit for a property. But if the work was done and, you know, we found out about it and they need to correct for it, they will go back and correct for the work, they wouldn't need to pull a permit then, and then septic system compliance inspection wouldn't be required. So, and that does happen from time to time. This would be a way that there would still be some kind of, you know, skin in the game, essentially for the property owner, but then it would also help ensure compliance of our septic systems around the lakes. So it could act as a deterrent for potential impermitted work and it promotes compliance for septic systems. And then there are other punitive measures, you know, fees or restrictions for other projects. You know, and then the other, the other thought here too, is if we were to implement something like Restore Your Shore, set, create a minimum threshold, it, you know, we could require meeting compliance on those minimum standards. So I think, I don't know how much discussion we'll have necessarily in this part, I know we talked about it a little bit, but I think we can maybe even further the conversation next time too, on some of these different steps we might want to take to address that. If there's any other ideas or thoughts that people have, we could maybe discuss a little bit more on that.
Nick, I guess the question really would be, do we want to? Before we come up with things we could do, if there's not a flavor to enforce compliance, then we're spinning our wheels, I guess. If there is a flavor of saying yes, if we do have a contractor that violates the ordinance in several ways, several times in the short period, you know, within a year, we are going to take action, well, then we can talk about what action that might be, but otherwise, we're really dealing with a hypothetical. So until we find out, will there be action taken if someone violates that? We might be spinning our wheels, I don't know. I personally think we should because again, if we've got 150 contractors, 50 of them are licensed, how the ones that are licensed start doing these kinds of things? Or they find out that the ones that are doing them, nothing happens to, and I'm losing jobs to residents because I'm telling them, you really can't build a wall higher than four feet, you can't cut into that bank, you can't haul riprap in. They're not going to come to me, but they're going to say, well, the other landscaper's doing it and I'm going to him or her because they're allowed to do it. So I do believe it's having an effect in that regard. However, again, it really, we might be putting the cart before the horse. First, we have to find out, do we want to do something to those contractors? Then if the answer is yes, then we really can come up with what sanctions there might be.
Yeah, we've got a lot of issues with these violations and I think Ken had mentioned something about that earlier. The after the fact permit should not be just a means by which doing business. And so that if they pay the $500, you know, then they get by with what they did because we would never have granted them permission to do what they did. Likewise, he mentioned a $1,000 fine. Well, if a person's doing $50,000 worth of landscape work, $1,000 is just a little bit of the price of doing the business. And so it's irrelevant to them as far as the cost, it's just getting the job done. So we've got to figure out a way to get some teeth into this so that the property owners and the contractors know that we're serious about controlling what happens on the shorelines, but we're doing it for, you know, for the right reasons because we want, you know, to preserve the quality of the water and the lakes. I've said enough.
Joe, Ken Mossman here. We tried this a long time ago because we said, you know, people, they're paying $300,000 for a lot, and like you say, a million dollars for the house. So what is a 500 or a $1,000 fine because I don't get what I want? And this was a number of years ago on a, I think it was on, it was on Lake Coronas. It was one of the resorts, did way more. And we thought, well, they should go like a percentage wise of what the job costs, but nothing ever became of it. So we're back to our 500 or a $1,000 fine and people doing and what they want to do. And now we're still arguing those points.
Okay, yeah, and I mean, we can definitely further discuss this at the next meeting too. And I think some of this is, it'll play into kind of this next aspect here with the fee schedule and permit costs. But I think it's also going to play a role in, you know, if we do make other changes to the ordinance, some of those problems might fix themselves where people are going to seek out the permit. If we, if there is some kind of flexibility involved, if, you know, if the permit isn't a cost for a small project, isn't as big of a barrier, that might correct some of the problems. And I think all of this is kind of tied together, you know, in some way here around the fees and the permit cost.
Nick, Jeff Bertram, you talked to other counties, you know, for that other information, previous information we discussed. I'd be curious, what do they do when they have violators like this? As long as you're having conversations with them, maybe find that out. What, what do they do? That might be helpful.
Yeah, definitely, we can bring some more of that information in. I think at the next meeting, that'll be good. We can look at, look at what other counties are doing. To this last point here, so for permit costs, one thing is an option if we do end up creating like different kinds of levels, maybe of how intensive the, the project is or to what scale. An option might be to create different, different, different costs for a permit, for a minor permit especially in terms of what's being done. And it'd be two or three different fees potentially, depending on the activity or the scale. But, yeah, I think we'll definitely have more discussions on this at future meetings.
Hey, Jason Cronin, I personally like the idea of looking at that, having different permit fee costs based on the application of work. I mean, Ken Mossman made a comment earlier on some projects, even the fine, $1,000 is a splash in the bucket, it's nothing, where in other cases, that is more than the project would have cost in total. So let's make it appropriate. The best thing would be for people to go and want to get the permits. I mean, that, we don't want to discourage people from getting permits, that's our opportunity to educate and to just provide much better guidance for people, so.
This is Carol. I'm wondering along with the ideas and options that are already out there, is there a way to also perhaps look at some incentives for doing some of what we want? I think all of us are really frustrated with those contractors. So kind of putting in some way, just that aside, but so for example, if a property owner ended up opting for doing more vegetation or something else that, that we want to see, could there also be some incentive? Again, I don't make it into what's the right word, but does there any reduction? reduction in the cost is some? Clearly, we have to soil more conservation for fun for them as well. But I'm just wondering about the carrot part in addition to the stick part. The carrot part probably relates more to landowners. The contractor, when I, has anybody really responded much to Nick's question about potentially denying additional permits for a contractor until they are in compliance with, with other, other properties? I don't know what people think about that. But those are two of my, I guess, thought sets slash questions.
Nick, a kind of a process question. So if a permit, if an applicant applies for a permit, pays the fee and the permit is denied, so it comes before the planning commission, we say no, or that's a smaller use permit that the staff says no to, is that fee still charged for the application? Or is there any chance of looking at refunding all or part of a permit that gets denied?
Yeah, so for major projects, conditional use permits, that's a non-refundable application fee, so that doesn't get returned, the applicant. For minor permits, it does not happen very often at all where they would apply for something that would get denied and they wouldn't get their money back. The vast majority of the time, they would have either met with me or the contractor who would have met with me first to understand what the requirements were. And then if there was something that was on their application that didn't meet ordinance requirements, you know, we would, we would state, you know, we would tell them that, okay, this cannot happen, you need to amend the application so that it does meet the requirements. And then when we, you know, then that's, that's done, and then the permit is issued, and then we do follow up with that site visit after that to ensure that it was installed properly. But it's very, very rare where, for a minor permit especially, that they would get denied the permit and then, you know, they wouldn't get their money back. 99% of the time, their, the applications, either the first time or after amended, is going to meet the permit requirements from the ordinance.
And then a question I had regarding, or a concern for identifying those contractors and consultants who are doing things outside of permit requirements. I wonder if we identify those and penalize those and take the license away, do they just go ahead and work with the landowner behind the scenes? And just say, don't tell us, don't tell us, don't tell them you're working with us. Just fill out the permit, here's the permit, and they'll work after the fact. So I, I'd like to ensure that we have a system that's accountable and folks aren't able to skirt around the process, hiding their identity or doing other underhanded dealings.
Nick, Jeff Bertram. Excuse me, Nick, Jeff Bertram. Are you aware, has a license ever been pulled? Has there any been, has any consequences ever happened to a contractor who's been licensed that has several violations?
Nothing has in the past couple of years here, but I believe it has happened previously in a couple of situations, but it hasn't happened in the last few years.
This is Angie Berg. I can jump in a little bit on that question. So getting to Jason Wienerman's question and then Jeff's question, I think that it's been, it's been a number of years, I honestly cannot remember in the last 10 years, could be more, that a license has been revoked. The county board has held, I believe, one or two public hearings to seek revocation. Ultimately, the, they were given a restricted license, if you will, but not revoked. So to Jason Wienerman's point, you know, I don't know that we've, we have experience with that. I don't think that's happening because we just haven't had those licenses get pulled.
Which, Jeff Bertram, which again gets to my point. If we're not going to do it, there's no sense in coming up with suggestions. I don't know that that should be the only option. I don't know that we should just pull the license, but I think we got to come up with something, you know, like not allowing them to do any other projects or something. But again, we need to know, will that be done before we come up with the suggestions?
Commissioner Kirsty, you know, one thing we haven't looked or talked about is any type of restoration or mitigation. And so in other words, if they put four foot walls in, you know, maybe half the wall comes out, the bottom half of the wall stays in, they restore the bank and they put a blanket down and put in vegetation because they didn't have a permit to do that. I mean, that's very punitive, but definitely they went ahead and did something they weren't supposed to do. Or do we do the option similar like we do with the solar gardens? And, but this is, you know, again, becomes a bit more too much of a bureaucracy then. Do they have to be bonded for the work that they're going to do? And if they do in excess, they're responsible for, for the work that they did, which was in excess and it's got to be removed.
Commissioner Kirsty, Angie Berg, I'll just touch on that for a bit. We do actually require a bond for the licensed contractor. It's a performance bond. In theory, that money is available in the event that a property owner would need to restore their site. It's, it's challenging. It would take a lawsuit typically to pull on that bond. So it's, it's more of an incentive for the contractor to comply with the requirements so their bond doesn't try to get pulled because it's a, it's a bond rating, right? And I'm not real familiar with how that works, but I do know that if there's a thought of being a bond being pulled or a county or someone tries to pull a bond, their bond rating is going to go up and they're going to end up paying more for their bonds and other aspects of their company. So it's there, it's not utilized currently.
Well, then, I guess maybe it's some, one of the things that we could use in our toolbox to get the word out that we're serious about what's happening. If they're bonded, then they should, it shouldn't affect then them to have to pay that penalty because the bond owner should, should be paying the penalty for the restoration. But then for them doing future business, then it will as their rating would have to go up.
And everyone, Jeff Bertram, we have to, again, remind ourselves, we're really only talking about less than a handful of contractors. We're not talking about 50 contractors. And so, and again, should we do that the first violation? Maybe not. We should just do the educational thing and, you know, have the, have the plan, the restoration plan and everything else. But when it starts coming in the second, third time, then I think we got a problem and we have to deal with it.
Yeah. Jeff, I think it could be handled through elevating consequences for, you know, as violations escalate. I mean, it should be a slap on the hand for someone that makes a mistake the first time and that obviously, once it becomes deliberate, we can, should be able to be pretty harsh with those contractors. I bet we, as a planning commission, wouldn't mind not seeing any more after-the-fact major shoreline alterations come, come through. Those are disastrous, so whatever we can do to prevent that, that's good.
Or massive clear cuts and all these other things we've seen this year.
Does anybody else have any other comments or questions on permit costs and fees at all? Well, if not, that kind of wraps up our first session here. So I think we had a pretty good conversation on kind of areas that we really want to focus in and maybe analyze a little bit further as we move through implementation here to the amend different aspects of the zoning ordinance and as it relates to shoreline alterations. As I mentioned before, we'll, we'll provide some information, kind of dive into more of the details at the next meeting and start to develop maybe some of the language that we want to maybe pursue. Are there any other final questions or thoughts?
Nick, Angie Berg, I just want to say thank you for putting a great presentation together for all the members who were able to join us tonight. And I would note the record to reflect that all members of the planning commission and commissioners, except for Mike Proul, did join at one point or another. I know one of our commissioners dropped out a little bit early. So thank you, everyone, for attending. And if there's anything you want to see us do format-wise or education-wise before the next meeting, please reach out to Nick or myself.
I agree, Angie. Nick, nicely done. Hopefully, we can continue to move this forward.
Thank you. Yeah, that's my hope as well.
Thanks, Nick. Good to see everybody. Bye.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Nick. Bye, everybody.